Welcome to you all and thank you for coming. We will start the candidate forum in a couple of minutes, but before we do, we have a few requests and a couple of announcements to make. We ask that no campaign buttons or campaign T-shirts be worn in this room and that no signs or literature be distributed. Campaign literature can be made available outside this room. Please remain as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking so that everyone can hear, and please hold your applause until the end of the forum so that candidates will have the maximum time to respond to your questions.
At this time, please silence your cellphones and any other electronics so they do not cause distraction during the event. This forum is being recorded. It is the League's policy to tape the entire candidate forum without editing so that the citizens will see the event in its entirety and not just selected scenes or soundbites. You are welcome to submit as many questions as you would like. Note cards are available for this purpose. Just hold up the card high above your head and an usher will collect them throughout the forum.
Questions should help define a candidate's position on issues concerning the office of which they seek election. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be asked. Those that fall into the same general area may be consolidated to allow us to cover as many topics as possible in the allotted time, and all questions submitted become the property of League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County.
Good evening. I am Steve Curtis, President of the Southwest Metro Chamber of Commerce, co-sponsor of tonight's forum, so I want to thank you to Sarah and Darcia for inviting us to do this. I appreciate it. I'd like to welcome you to the Carver County Commissioners Candidate Forum on behalf of the Chamber and the League. Candidate forums such as this one are important. They allow Chamber members, partner organizations, area businesses, and community members an opportunity to engage and hear from candidates regarding issues that are important to them in the Southwest Metro business community. We thank both the candidates and the audience for attending tonight and our online for viewing.
I'm Laura Helmer. I'm the President of the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose a political party or any candidate for office. League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County has a longstanding history in our community of providing unbiased candidate and issue information that is widely used by Minnesota voters regardless of their political beliefs. We are pleased to be partnering with the Southwest Metro Chamber of Commerce on this forum.
Sponsorship of this forum is a public service, providing you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss important issues face to face. The views expressed here tonight are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters or the Southwest Metro Chamber of Commerce. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement by the League or the Southwest Metro Chamber of any particular candidate.
League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. There's never enough time to cover all the issues, so if you feel that your question was not addressed tonight, please contact the candidate directly after the forum. Now, before we begin our forum tonight, we'd like to take a moment and highlight a constitutional amendment that will appear on the November ballot. Minnesota voters will be asked to either reauthorize or end a constitutional amendment that allocates 40% of state lottery proceeds to the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund. For the amendment to pass, over 50% of voters must vote yes. Leaving the question blank counts as a no vote. Please be sure to look for the amendment and vote as you wish. And now, I would like to introduce our moderator. Jean Bringold Pro is a certified moderator from League of Women Voters and is not a voter in this Commissioner race. Jean?
Thank you, Laura. All candidates for Carver County Commissioners District One and Three were invited to participate. The candidates attending tonight are Lisa Anderson, candidate for Carver County Commissioner in District One; Greg Boe, candidate for Carver County Commissioner in District One; John Mahalov, candidate for Carver County Commissioner in District Three; and Matt Uderman, candidate for Carver County Commissioner in District Three. You will be given up to one minute to respond to the questions. Depending on the complexity of the question, I may announce less time per question. Please note our timekeepers who have a 30-second and then a 15-second sign. They also have a stop sign, or we'll call time, to be sure each candidate has the full time allotted. We hope that most, if not all, of your questions will be those submitted by the audience. Please hold your note card high in the air so our ushers will know to collect them from you. We also have questions submitted by email to the League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County. Now, we will begin with the opening statements. Ms. Anderson?
All right. Thank you. Hello and thank you for having me. My name is Lisa Anderson. I'm a 22-year resident of Chaska where I raised my two sons. I own and operate a leadership development business, and prior to that, I've been blessed to work with some of the top organizations in the world developing leaders at every level. My nearly 14-year tenure on the school board is where I developed my passion for serving this beautiful community of ours. Two years ago, after I announced my imminent departure from the school board, I received an email from a teacher with whom, up until just a few weeks ago, I had never had an in-person conversation. Here's what she wrote. "I have attended several board meetings over the last few years in various capacities. The toughest meeting I ever attended was when a parent group was strongly pushing ending wearing masks. It was a very challenging meeting to attend. Every time I have seen you in action on the board, I have felt such gratitude. You stay calm and respectful to all of our community members. This brings me pride as an Eastern Carver County employee and as a citizen in our community. I want you to know that you will be greatly missed." This email serves as a reminder to me that leadership matters, that treating people with respect matters, and I firmly believe that more unites us than divides us, and we need leaders to bring us together and focus on our future. I will bring the values of engagement, collaboration, and partnership to the Carver County Board of Commission so that we can build tomorrow together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boe?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would first like to thank the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County and the Southwest Metro Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, and I'd like to thank each of you for taking the time to attend this forum. I am Greg Boe, and I am running for the open seat on the Carver County Board of Commissioners representing District One, which is the eastern half of Chaska and the southern half of Chanhassen. That is the seat currently held by Gail Degler. I have lived in Carver County for 28 years, including 24 years in Chaska and four years in Chanhassen. I enjoy public service. I like serving our community. I had the honor and privilege of being elected or appointed to serve our community in many ways over the past years, including terms in the state legislature, city council, city planning commission, county planning commission, Southwest Transit Commission, and Minnesota Municipal Power Agency Board of Directors, to name a few. Professionally, I have worked in both private industry and local government, and I believe both of these experiences will be helpful for us as Carver County moves into the future. Lastly, I am a bridge builder who works well with all sides, and I would like to put my experience to work for you. So once again, thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Mr. Mahalov?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you all for coming to this event. I think that local government is very important. It's where government actually affects our everyday lives and everything that we do and personally as with our families. My name is John Mahalov. My family and I are celebrating our 11th year here in Chaska. I'm a business owner. I operate hospitality consulting firms. I mainly work with restaurants and hotels in the Twin Cities and surrounding areas. I also own a small dog food business. Been launching new locations. We're in 13 states right now. It's kind of a COVID buy-off thing that we did. I've probably been given 17 years of service as a volunteer for Henry County Sheriff's Department. I am a deputy diver and water patrol. I've completed hundreds of missions, not just through in the Henry County but throughout the United States, as well as working with Carver County on multiple occasions as well. I decided to run for office because I feel it's time to take my skills as a business professional, focusing on growth strategies, operational optimization, service, and take these strategies to the county commission. I firmly believe that our citizens deserve to feel secure in every aspect of their lives. Safety is not just about protection from crime, it's about having peace of mind, knowing that basic needs are met. This includes freedom from hunger, stable and secure home, grateful, gainful employment, safe roads, equitable taxation, and access to services that are rendered by the county.
Thank you. Mr. Uderman?
If we haven't met, my name is Matt Uderman, and I have the distinct privilege of being the only person up here that's in elected, so just wanted to offer that as a piece that I probably have one up on most when it comes to answering these questions. And if we haven't met before, one, a few things you need to know about me is results matter. I focus on results. So if you're watching online or if you're an undecided voter, I'd urge you to go to YouMatterToMatt.com/resultsMatter because I was the only one dumb enough four years ago to put out 100 things I said I was going to do if I was elected, and I was told that's unprecedented, that's ridiculous. Why would you do such a thing? And here we are four years later, and we've made progress on darn near every single one of those. If you're a staff member and you're listening to this call, look in your paycheck, it's bigger than it was four years ago, and if you look in the next three years, it'll be even bigger. If you look at the cost of your health care insurance, next year, your health care insurance will be dramatically reduced. That wasn't the result of me, that was the result of five people on the board, that was the result of listening every single year to every single member of our staff and ask them what it is that they want. So as we get through throughout the course of the night, you're going to find out that I'm pro-you. My message of You Matter isn't about me, it's about you. This seat isn't mine, it's yours, and if you're an undecided voter, I hope I earn your vote. I'm pro-community, pro-employee, pro-business, pro-planning for the future, pro-vision, pro-community for a lifetime, not just in words but in results. And so again, I'd urge you to go to YouMatterToMatt.com/resultsMatter and see the 100 things and the progress that we made, including we're on pace to be the first county in the state with 100% fiber broadband access. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we'll start with some general questions. I think you've all covered your qualities and qualifications, so I'm not going to ask that question. So why don't we move right on to the next one? What is your vision for the future of Carver County? What will be Carver County's biggest challenge in the next two years? And according to my grid, we start with Ms. Anderson.
All right. Thank you so much. So my vision for Carver County is that it is a place that we can continue to, that's a great place for people to live, work, and play, and that means affordable housing options, that means a thriving business community, and that means a trail and park system that will actually continue to grow and with personal wellness. I think one of the biggest challenges we have is Carver County is the fastest-growing county in the state of Minnesota, and we need strong planning in order for that to happen, in order for us to prepare for this growth. When I was on the Eastern Carver County School Board, I had the pleasure of helping the school district plan for the future. We created a tax stabilization plan and a deferred maintenance plan to help with the investment that taxpayers have paid into infrastructure, and I believe those qualities will help plan for the next 100 years for Carver County. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Boe?
Very good. Thank you very much. The vision that I have for Carver County is a place for all, a place for all to prosper and thrive and feel welcome. The biggest challenge, I think, is growth as well. We are one of the fastest-growing counties in Minnesota now, I think currently number two percentage-wise, so, you know, the growth is coming. I know during my time at Scott County, there were two consecutive years where Scott County was the fastest-growing county in the northern half of the United States, two consecutive years according to the U.S. Census Bureau. That's incredible growth for a small county in Minnesota. They were not prepared for that growth when they opened up the new 169 River Crossing, and it rolled over them like a steamroller. It took years to regain control of that growth and to make sure that it created positive impacts in our community instead of a detriment. So that's the experience I want to bring here to help us to be prepared so that we can make that growth a positive instead of a negative and have it work for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mahalov?
Yeah, my vision is one where we can all come together as people and as a community and come to a common consensus of how we grow this community. There's no joke that we are going to grow this community. It is growing at an alarming level. We have to make sure we have the infrastructure that's there, but we have to do it smartly. We can't just be spending money that we don't have. We can't be taxing people out of their own homes just so we can work on future growth. We have to base our decisions on who our community is and not lose what made us great. Again, our biggest challenge is there's financial budgeting issues, and how do we spend that money? Make sure we're doing it fiscally responsibly in a common sense matter that benefits the community as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Uderman?
We live in a great community, and when I ran four years ago, people said, "Well, what's wrong with Carver County?" And I said, "Nothing. We just want to make it even better." I've said things like a balance board is a better board, we need more voices at the table. I've said we need to invest in our youth because right now, being the fastest-growing county in the state, we're also the most affluent county in the state, and what's happening is our aging population is aging faster here than most places, and our youth population is shrinking faster than anywhere else. We need to be a place where youth and families with young kids can grow their family here. And I think five key places that I put out four years ago are the five key places I've spent some energy in attracting that youth. We need to focus on our income disparity, we need to focus on youth mental health, we need to focus on food security, which we have, we are on path to eradicate food insecurity within Carver County. We need to focus on our housing to make units available to first-time schoolteachers making $45,000 a year, and when we talk about our vision, we can't have a darn asterisk. We have to say the best place to live, work, and play for a lifetime for everybody, not just people that are making $200,000 or more a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to be asking questions in a different order because of my grid, but we will make sure everybody gets to answer the questions. And the first person I'll ask this question to is Mr. Uderman. How do you plan to communicate with constituents, both those who hold similar views to your own and those that differ?
I think it's a great question, and I think the words that ring in my head often is is, "Why wait?" And you're probably going to ask a lot of questions. What do you plan to do? What are you going to do? What are your things, your thoughts and your ideas? We're doing these things right now. When I came into office, I made 100 promises, and one of those is to reach out to every single staff member once a year, and I do that every single year. I sent them an email. In the past year, my two questions were this. What are the areas that we from the front of the room should elevate as priorities within our community? And number two, would you recommend working at Carver County to anybody else? Big, huge questions. The second one, I was a little bit miffed at some of the answers. Some people were like, "I don't like working here, I don't like the pay, I don't like this, that, and the other thing," but heck, yeah, I recommended it to my family members. Other people said, "Here's a path for you to do different things." And so I think those are the two things. We need to get in front of our staff, we have to go into uncomfortable places. My daughter, both my daughters go to La Cadaemia, it's a Spanish immersion program. 20 years ago, in Carver County, less than 2% of people were people of color. My kindergarten is incoming class, 27% of people are incoming kindergartners. We have people, we have social infrastructure and we have physical infrastructure, and we need to focus on both.
Thank you. Mr. Mahalov?
Yeah, communication is a two-road street. There is hearing, and there's listening, and there's talking. There's really why God gave us two ears and one mouth. I think we need to really focus on listening to our citizens, listening to our business people, listening to our community. They're talking, they're ready to talk. I'm hearing constantly how they feel like they're deaf ears, and it's one thing to listen, it's another thing to hear, and taking what they say to heart and actually believing it. Might not necessarily agree with everything somebody says, but you have to listen to them, get all the facts before you can make that decision. Maintaining transparency and having an open-door policy is the only way to do it, and I plan on being open-door for my entire career.
Thank you. And Ms. Anderson? Oh, Mr. Boe. No, Ms. Anderson. I've got to read my dirt. Ms. Anderson?
All good. Communication is critical. Carver County, this level of government is one of the most opaque levels of government. People know what school district board members do, they know what county, city council people do, but they don't always know what the county does, and so I think it's critical to get that out there. Eastern Carver County does a community report four times a year, and that's the piece of information that most community members use to get the word out. And I also believe it is time to have open forums and opportunities for community members to come and talk with board members and for us to hear what they want. And I also think it's time for all Carver County board meetings to be recorded and put on the website so that voters and taxpayers know what their government officials are doing.
And now, Mr. Boe?
Very good. Thank you. So really, there's two questions in one here. One is, how will I communicate? And email, telephone calls, and in-person discussions, whether it's on the street, on the sidewalk, or at a local coffee shop? But how will the county communicate? I think that's probably the bigger question, and I think website obviously is a big thing, but one of the big things that we need here is a county newsletter, and I had brought that up a few times as an employee, and it didn't get traction. But I think it's more important now than ever because we've lost our local, small-town community newspapers, and that was a big blow to our communities. And so we need to start a newsletter here. When I worked at Blue Earth County, they had the Blue Earth County Communicator. At Scott County, they had the Scott County Scene. It went out every other month to every mailbox in the county. I would like to do something like that here at Carver County so we can get news out to the residents, and then that fosters communication and has them know when the meetings are so they can make sure to watch our meetings here.
Okay. Thank you. And our next question, we will start with you, Mr. Boe. Do you think it's important to have a competitive business climate? And how can we improve Carver County's competitiveness to make sure private sector businesses can start and grow in our county?
It is absolutely vital that we have a competitive and a business-friendly environment here in Carver County. One of the things we did in Scott County is, while I was there, they had a group that would meet with residents who were interested in starting a new business and help them through the confusing journey to start that. Learn how to set up a business plan and what you need to do and how you can do financing and how you can get your business plan in line. I'd like to certainly see us do that here, but we need to be business-friendly, and that means anything from having a less cumbersome regulatory environment here and making sure that the tax burden is not too big. We need to encourage our businesses to locate here, we need to encourage our businesses to stay here and expand here, and we need to encourage new entrepreneurs in our community to start a business here. We all benefit because we grow the tax base, we diversify the tax base, and we create jobs in our community. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
We absolutely need to be more business-friendly. We are overly reliant on property taxes in this county, and expanding the business tax base is going to be one way that we can do to expand the tax base. And a big piece of doing that is we really need to look deeply at some of our county ordinances. We have ordinances that have been in place for 50 years, and they're harming our businesses. I've had business owner after business owner come to me and tell me how difficult it is to work with and do business in Carver County. I'm sick and tired of seeing businesses move to Scott County because it's quite frankly easier for them to work with. So this is a time for us to really look at how we bring business into the community, but not just that. How do we treat our current business owners and how can we support them for the future?
Thank you. Mr. Uderman?
Yeah, I often say I'm the pro-business candidate. I don't just mean that with rhetoric, I mean that with results. When somebody wants a sign on Highway 212, and it's the first opportunity for us to do so after we've invested millions and waited decades and decades to do so, and we say no because there's an ordinance, shouldn't it be our job to look into that and have a conversation and say, "How can we help you after you've been riddled for multiple years through COVID and after prices on food have gone up?" Absolutely, we need to. The other thing that's absolutely true is we have three of the fastest-growing cities in the state in our county, Waconia, Carver, and Victoria. It's painful to think that just about 1% of their tax base is non-residential. So as they grow, I mean, former Mayor Van Iel is here, Chaska's done an impeccable job of having a business tax base, fantastic job, and having that mix to take some of that burden off of the owners. We need to have a bold vision, that bold vision should include a special taxing district on 212 to capitalize on the four-lane road that's there to attract more commercial-industrial businesses, and to Lisa's point, we need to delay or some of the crap that's in the way of making business successful. I've championed that charge. We need to continue to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Mahalov?
Yeah, being a small business owner, I can't agree more that with everybody on the board right now, it is vital and imperative that we get rid of some of these roadblocks that are preventing our businesses from expanding that are currently here and from bringing new businesses in. There are ordinances that are 50 years old that are really becoming a problem, and it's a fact that small businesses are going to Scott County. They are not choosing because of how hard we as a county make it to do business here. It's more than just creating businesses and jobs, it's also quality of life. I mean, nice little stores down in Chaska, bookstores, coffee shops, it really creates a sense of community. It goes just beyond money, it's that community that makes you feel good be part of a town that is vibrant and growing, and part of that is with the businesses that we have inside of our cities. It's just, we have to focus on this, and it has to be priority one from day one.
Thank you very much. Our next question is, how will you connect with diverse communities throughout our county, particularly communities of color whose voices may have been historically underrepresented? And we'll begin with Mr. Mahalov.
Yeah, great question. I've got 17 years in law enforcement, and unfortunately, in law enforcement, you are obviously dealing with minorities and people of color. People have to be dealt with respect. People are people, all means all, doesn't matter what color you are or what ethnicity you are or anything else. People have to be treated with respect, and communicating, again, is hearing and listening to their needs and their issues. People have different issues no matter who they are, whether they're $200-plus thousand dollars a year or they're on social welfare. It's imperative that we communicate them, find out their problems, and work together to solve those specific issues.
Thank you very much. Mr. Uderman?
I think proximity is a great answer to the challenge we have in diversity. I mentioned both my kids go to La Cadaemia, it's a Spanish immersion program, incoming kindergartner, 27% of her incoming class doesn't look like anybody that's up on this board. And where do those results meet the rhetoric? I'm the first person, I think, historically in Carver County to appoint somebody that became the first African-American person that represented us on the park board. I think I'm the first person to name somebody from the LBGCU+ community to our mental health committee. I think I'm the only person that's appointed somebody that's of Asian descent that became the president of the library board. And so sometimes we've got to listen, and sometimes we've got to take that listening and actually act, and I think that one way to do that is put people in proximity. The other thing, I think, is if we start earlier, the better off we are. I look on sports fields, and I see the kids that are on the field, I also see the kids that aren't off the field. So I've been championing the cause. I've been championing the cause to have a standard within our community that every second, third, and fourth grader participate in three activities. And we lower those barriers by addressing cost issues, ride issues, and community issues. And if we can solidify those families on the fields, we're going to have a better community 20 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bo?
Very good. Time when I served on the Chaska City Council, we worked very hard to grow the Human Rights Commission in the city of Chaska. They were one of the first communities in this side of the metro to do that. That was very important for us as a community. We wanted new residents coming to Chaska to feel welcome, to feel a part of the community. So the Human Rights Commission has been very popular in the community. It's brought a lot of folks from many different cultures to be a part of our city government in the city and feel a part of that process. And some of those are beginning to say, I'm ready to run for a local office. So that's growing future leaders in a variety of cultures. That's important. I also taught my kids growing up that we need to treat everyone with respect and give everyone opportunities because we all do better when we all do better. So that's it, is working with others, communicating with others, listening to others. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I've been blessed to have developed a lot of different relationships with people with a variety of different backgrounds. I think one of the things that I would really like to do is use some of the community, Carver County has a variety of different committees, and use some of those committees to build the next generation of leaders. It's difficult for someone to immediately go into running for office, but if they serve on the park board, or the CDA, or one of those committees, that brings them in. As I've gone door-to-door in every single neighborhood in District One, I've seen the different variety of housing options. And I think it's imperative that we bring people from all across the county in every single neighborhood to be involved in Carver County.
Thank you. Our next question is, what should be the role of the Carver County Community Development Agency, or CDA, and its governance relationship with the county board? And we will start with Ms. Anderson.
I think this is a really good question. Currently, the Carver County Commission appoints the members of the CDA Board, but doesn't have other governing rights. And they also donate, or not donate, but contribute money to the CDA. So this would be an area that I would like to delve into a little bit more and better understand the relationship between the Carver County Board and the CDA, and find out how we can build those bridges. Recently, when the CDA came with their budget projection, and it was turned down. I feel like they really need to have a stronger relationship in order to understand what's expected of them and so that the board can also understand what they expect from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Bo.
Yes. As the former Environmental Services Department Manager at Carver County, we partnered with the CDA quite a bit in a lot of different ways. And so I've gotten to know the CDA and the members of that board. We worked with them to promote a lot of different housing options, a lot of different housing opportunities. We worked with them to make sure that folks who were in their home can stay in their home through some programs that would help them, for example, with a failing septic system out in the country, and the expense was just too much for the family budget. Would they have to sell that home, sell that farm? Or could they stay on that home? And where they had raised their children. So we partnered with them in many different ways, got to know them. They're a phenomenal organization. And I'd like to continue as a commissioner to work with them, to encourage communication, so that we can better understand what they want to do and they can better understand the constraints that we face as a county board.
Thank you. Mr. Uderman?
I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize there, Carlson's in the room, longtime member of the CDA Board, few people as passionate as she is. Julie Frick just retired. I was at her retirement earlier this week. And between the two, over 60 years of dedication. The state and the federal level government make it impossible for us to pave the way for affordable housing. And when I talk about affordable housing, people conjure different ideas. I'm talking about the first-time school teacher making $45,000 a year. Where does that individual live? Unfortunately, time and again, we hear the answer is not here. When John and Lisa and Greg are talking about bringing businesses here, there's a lot of businesses that want to be here. The Frye family would put up a half a million square foot every other year if they could, but they don't have employees to be here. It's just too unaffordable. And the CDA has been asked to do too much candidly. We should ask them to do affordable housing and only affordable housing until we can turn a corner. As part of that, we should articulate a vision as to what the goal line looks like. They've delivered on average about 15 incremental units annually. We're on the clip to deliver 220 incremental units in the next two years. That's historic. It's because somebody had the balls in the front of the room to say, we're going to do something about it. The CDA got to work and we put funding behind it and we did it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is, statistics show that-
Hold on, sir. John needs to go. I'm still in the room.
I told you, I'm a rebel, you know?
You weren't lying.
I had you crossed off already.
CDA serves a tremendous function. And I think that the communication piece between what the board needs and what the board wants and look at our strategic plan and what the CDA needs, it needs to coexist a little bit better. I think that there's a lot of times where they're asking for stuff and it's not on our strategic plan. We need to communicate and figure out what their strategic plan is and work together and add it into our strategic plan so that we can actually accomplish what we need to get done.
Okay. All right. Now we'll move on to the next question. Statistics show that at least one-fourth of the contents of our trash is compostable. What steps, if any, would you propose to increase access to residential ordnance recycling in Carver County? And we will begin with Mr. Mahalov.
Yeah, and I think that some of the waste management businesses are starting to do it. But I think we should make it mandatory that they provide a compostable bin to every single household that's out there. It's that easy. It's easy. We've got one. We compost at home. And it's just so much easier when we have that bin right there, ready to go. And it doesn't cost them any more money. They've already got the drivers, they got the trucks, they've got the ability to do it. I think that we should require that by every waste management company.
Okay. And our next question, that question goes to Mr. Uderman.
Yeah, you know, this is one of those areas where you've got to look at who has the best practices and the person with the most experience up here is Greg Bo because he does that. Since he retired, Brad came in and now he's our pro with it. So a lot of questions are being asked. A lot of those questions have led to different places where you go grab those best practices. So I had the opportunity to go down to the HERC. Everybody knows about the HERC. It's the trash burner. It's right behind the Target Center. And there's people lined up on one side of the aisle that say, get rid of it. And there's other people on the other side of the aisle that says, what are 60% of the trash in Minneapolis going to do? What does that mean for Carver County? Well, it means trash is kind of a hot topic. People in Carver County have largely said, leave my trash alone. We'll find a third-party provider to do so. But in the spirit of the things that we want to do, partnership is the way to go. We've got great partnerships with Scott County. They're building a new place. We can lean into different areas we can do. We're actually looking at the environmental services so we can get a more useful life out of it and deliver more services. But touring the HERC, as much as I'd like to believe that everybody's going to recycle and compost, they don't. The honest to God truth and reality is, is they simply don't. And so we have to be prudent with the tax dollars and say, should we leave this for the third-party companies to do with a competitive business? Or should we take that as a government? I think it's in the third party's hands. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
I look, I do a lot with change and human change. And this would be a huge change. A lot of people, I remember when recycling was something that barely anyone does. And now, most people have a recycling unit. I think it would take some time to move toward composting. And I think it's through education and public-private partnerships that we can get there. This is not something that would happen overnight, but I think that it's a goal. And I think it's something that we can get to in the next decade.
Okay. And Mr. Bo?
Very good. Thank you. So as a 30-year environmental professional, this is a question near and dear to my heart. As a person who likes to and sees benefit in partnering and collaborating with others, this is an excellent opportunity. The MPCA requires all counties to do a solid waste management plan every so many years. And we're in the process of doing that right now. And one of the goals, one of the requirements in there from the state is to decrease waste production, increase organic processing and recycling. So we will be doing that anyway. But one of the ways that we can do it more efficiently is partnering with others. That includes the Shakopee, Midwakka, and Sioux, which are building a new organic facility very near to the border with Carver County, just outside of downtown Chaska. We can partner with them. And I already have working relationships with the folks at the tribe. And we can do great things with them. But we can also do great things with Scott County. They are ahead of us in that regard, as has been mentioned. And we can benefit from collaborating with them as a fellow neighboring suburban county. So working with others to get things done.
Thank you. All right. Our next question. The cost of housing continues to rise dramatically. How do you propose to overcome opposition to affordable housing so that all county residents have an affordable place to live? And we'll start with Mr. Bo.
Affordable housing is something that we all need. I know in the city of Chaska, when I was on the Chaska City Council, we really strove for lifecycle housing. We wanted people to be able to stay in our community from the time that they're going off on their own outside of mom and dad's house, to their first home, their first rental properties even, maybe their first job and living on their own. And then when they get married, and when they grow a family. And then when they start downsizing after their family has grown and is moving out on their own. Chaska wanted to provide lifecycle housing. And they started a community land trust, which has since been turned over to the county and is now the county land trust. Things like that give more opportunities and more options. But it's really just working with folks. A lot of the folks who are taking advantage of those programs and benefiting from those programs just sometimes need to be taught, what does it mean to be a good neighbor? And things like that can reduce concern that other neighbors may have. But it's just allowing everyone to find their place in our community.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Ms. Anderson.
I think with collaborating with the cities to try and identify a variety of housing options. I think a lot of times when you talk about affordable housing, we talk a lot about renting. And I think we need to provide options for people to own their home. Because when people can own their home, that's how they can build wealth. And that's what people are looking for. I also believe that right now, the gap in housing is for affordable senior housing. There's a variety of people, like me, empty nesters who can't afford to downsize. So we really need to find opportunities for people like me to move into other homes so that frees up my home for a family. And I think by partnering with our cities, because that's really where they have, that's their responsibility, I think that we can work with finding a variety of housing options. Thank you.
And now we'll go to Mr. Mahalov.
Yeah, affordable housing is going to be a key concept for the next 10 years. As we grow, we have an infrastructure that's going to be taken care of by workers. And there is no easy solution, unfortunately. But what we can do is start making bridges and crossing those bridges and communicating with landlords, getting programs, TIF programs or tax abatement programs for landlords and for housing. Also, we need to do is we need to look at the way we assess housing as a whole. Right now, houses are just kind of assessed based on what the worth of your neighbor's square foot is when they sold their houses. It used to be a county assessor would come in and say, have you done any improvements to your house? Yeah, I put in $50,000. Then it goes up. But right now, if my neighbor has a $100,000 kitchen and sells his house for $100,000 more than mine, even though the exact same house, my assessment goes up $100,000. And by this pricing of housing going up, it takes people out of the category of being able to afford housing at entry level.
And Mr. Uderman?
I had the opportunity to interview with the Realtors, Minneapolis-area Realtors Association. I think it was the only candidate that was invited to do so because of the work we've done in this space. And although it might not feel like it if you're sitting in the middle of Minneapolis, and for a lot of different reasons, in the outside, in the metro, I don't think anybody does it better than us. And I'm looking at Sarah because she's put blood, sweat, and tears in for 30 years to build a lot of those relationships. I think the answer is fourfold. One, we have to make the topic less scary. I think people conjure in their heads when they're living in a million and a half dollar house, what affordable housing is. We're talking about the first-time school teacher making 45 grand a year. That person's not scary. Okay? So we have to make it less scary by having real conversations. We have to talk about smaller. The average square footage in Carver County in a house is going up, not down. It's 3,200 square foot. We don't need it. I grew up in a house that was 1,100 square foot. I did just fine. The third thing we need to do is we need to come in partnership with people, developer communities and others, to develop naturally occurring housing that we don't have to subsidize. And the fourth thing is we have to have a goal line. We have to know where we're going so we can get there. And I will tell you, if I get a few more minutes, of a 7770 plan and a 540 plan. I'll wait then. Maybe I'll do it later. Thanks.
All right. What role should the county play in tourism? And we'll start with you, Mr. Uderman?
Well, tourism is something that's near and dear to me. And if anybody follows the board meetings, I'm sure there's all seven of you that have watched the meetings. It's a passion point for me. I think we have to find a way to give a path to take some of the burden off of homeownership, the tax on homeowners, and put it someplace else. And none better to do it than to tax people that don't live here. And so agritourism and tourism is one way to do so. Commissioner Degler's in the audience somewhere here. He does agritourism. They do hay rack rides right on the edge of his property across from Chanhassen. We have three breweries. I think it's, sorry, three wineries. I think it's five breweries and a distillery. People are coming and finding Waconia. They're coming and finding Chaska. They're coming to Chanhassen. Give them a chance to do so. We have laboriously and unnecessarily asked the CDA to take this on, and we have failed miserably at it. I think we should create a consortium of all the chambers of commerce across the county, bring them together, give them a budget, and tell them to go grab money that's outside of Carver County, bring it here, showcase what we have. We can attract future builders. We can attract future business owners. And just go talk to Aaron Schram. He will tell you how many Minneapolis business owners come out here. They love the oasis. They want to locate here. And if there was labor here, they would bring their businesses here. Thank you.
And now we'll go to Mr. Mahalov.
Yeah, I think we, you know, tourism is one word, but I'd like to change that to making it a destination cities. I think destination is better than a tourism. Tourism to me is like a one-time weekend, Monday might be. Destination is for everyday usage. And it needs to be everyday usage. I think we need to focus more on what can we give people from other counties and other cities reasons to come here, not just for a tourist attraction, but for everyday usage. And it is the breweries. It is some of the other things that are kind of different that we have that's unique. We have to make sure we're focused on what's unique, but also what we've done right in the past. And these cute little cities that we have, we can't lose the infrastructure, what they are. We can't lose the heart that has made Carver County so great. And part of that is just letting people know that we're out here. And it's going to take some money and it's going to take some cooperation with businesses. But when we get county money in from other counties, we're all better off.
Thank you. Mr. Bo?
Very good. Visitors, tourism, destination, that's all very important in our community because when people visit our community, in effect, they pay to play. And bringing those dollars to our community is very helpful for us. So I think we need to promote what we have. And when I worked at Scott County, they did a very good job of promoting Scott County as a destination to live, work, and play. And we have that option or we have that idea here, but I'd like to see more of it on the work and the play part of it, you know, promoting what we have. In Chaska, we wanted to create a destination. And so one of the things we did was a wow project, the Chaska Curling Center, which in a matter of just a few years is the largest curling center in the United States by membership. It brings people as far away from Mankato each week to the community, to come into our community, to spend money in local restaurants and things like that. Visitors coming for tournaments as well. Breweries and wineries in our county and just our beautiful bike trails and parks and such. We can do it. We can attract people and encourage them to come here and visit. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Tourism is a great way for us to expand our tax base and hopefully to attract other businesses into our community that will provide services and jobs to Carver County families. I think one of the biggest issues that we have with attracting tourism here is we don't have lodging. And so that's another opportunity for us to partner with our cities and find an opportunity to have a cute, quaint little hotel so that people can actually come and stay for the weekend. Right now, we are a great staycation location, and we will continue to be that. And I also love the fact that so many people can enjoy the amenities that Carver County offers, our trails, our golf courses. But again, we really need to embrace this idea of tourism so that we can expand our tax base. tax base.
Okay. And next, I have a couple of questions about election integrity. As a county commissioner, what measures of any would you support to reinforce or ensure voter confidence in our elections? And we'll start with Ms. Anderson.
I've been watching the Carver County Board meetings for over two years now and this election question will not go away. And I have very respected friends on both sides of the aisle who have real concerns about this. And so, we really do need to ask the question on what can we do to increase the confidence of our elections? I have complete faith in Kendra Olson and the process, but that's not enough. So, we really need to actually dig in and find ways to increase that confidence. One thing that I would like to do is I would like to attend the training that election judges attend. And I also would like to really sit down with both sides and find out what solutions they offer and what's in our lane, what can we do that isn't legislative? So, this is something that we really need to continue to dig into because we need to answer this question.
Mr. Bowe.
Very good. I have heard from friends over the years on both sides of the political aisle who have concerns about the election process. And that's from the federal level on down to local. And so, friends of mine who are Democrat have been concerned at some past elections, friends of mine who are Republican have been concerned as well. And that tells me that there is distrust of the system as a whole. And that's problematic. We have to have trust in the system. And so, we need to make sure we take steps to address that. One of the things I think we need to do is to work hard at the local level to have poll watchers and election judges in matching numbers on both sides of the aisle that are able to be there and be a part of the process. I know the people personally in the county who are part of the election process here. I trust them implicitly, but I think just having that oversight from both sides of the political aisle will give people confidence in the system.
Mr. Mahalov.
Yeah, this is a issue that goes on both sides of the aisle, like everyone's saying. And it's, as much as we trust our officials, for some reason, the people are not trusting the officials. And that's what really matters is that they're not doing it. Doesn't matter what we sitting up here believe or don't believe. We have to be transparent to make sure we're giving opportunities for people to speak about what their problems are with the election issues and really make sure that the integrity is there, first of all. And then second of all, making sure that we are transparently giving it to the people what their questions are and figuring it out. There's a bridge there that needs to be, that needs to be closed up. And it's going to be a communication piece where we're, again, we're hearing and we're listening to what the people's issues are because it's both sides of the aisle. So, it's obviously an issue that we need to address and it needs to be addressed at the local level. That local level right now is Carver County.
All right, Mr. Urdeman.
I think I heard a statistic, something like 92% of election complaints come from four or five organizations. And check me if I'm right or wrong on that one, but there's a federal and a national state movement on a lot of these things. And I think a lot of people press on the county form of government to do something about it because it's a pretty powerful form of government that doesn't get stuck in the mud of the, are you on the left or are you on the right? Of course, everybody's got their political leanings. I'll echo what Lisa said. We have utmost confidence in Kendra and her team. And I'll say that again, we have utmost confidence in Kendra and her team. I don't think we've found a single ballot that's been challenged. That said, I lean more on the side of being more progressive and upstream of trying different things to be more transparent. I was the only one that was not up for election two years ago, so I sat on the canvassing board and had a chance to sit in that room. And we made sure that there was a gallery so people could come in. The honest to God truth is we spent our time on hundreds of huge issues. And this is a big issue. It absolutely is. There was four people that showed up to that day. And so, we need to really lean into where is our time best spent? And once we go down enough rabbit holes and we're solidified on what we're trying to do, we really need to let the staff do their jobs and maybe be more progressive at the state level and convincing them with legislative priorities to move more on it. I'm on the legislative priorities team and I think that we can make some movement on that next year.
Thank you. Now I have some questions on mental health and public safety. There is no emergency shelter in Carver County for those seeking safe exit from domestic violence. Do you support increasing access to an emergency shelter for those seeking safe exit from domestic violence in Carver County? Why or why not? And we'll start with Mr. Bowe.
I recall being on the city council many years back and there was some discussion of wanting to create that type of a situation. And I think we do have a mental health crisis facility, but it's small. And so, I think need certainly will probably outpace any number of beds that are available. So, I believe that we will need to work to find that. I think we can also partner with other surrounding counties to find beds close by. I find a higher level of success when a person who is having a mental health crisis is able to find a place that's safe closer to home. Or if they need to have a safe place to get away from family or individual. Closer to home, the closer you are, the more successful you are going to be. Thank you.
And our next person is Mr. Mahalov.
Yep, obviously 17 years of law enforcement. I've seen a lot of mental health issues and domestic violence issues. And, you know, you can take the perpetrator away, but then you leave the victim there. It is important that we take care of the victim as much as it is to take care of the perpetrator. The fact of the matter is we don't have enough beds for mental health right now. And we talk about spending all this money on infrastructure in terms of more roads, better bridges, more lanes, water treatment facilities, but more importantly is our mental health crisis right now. And as much as the infrastructure needs to be fixed for our roads for growth, mental health needs to be addressed just as well. We need to make sure we're allocating the dollars in the budget to take care of it.
Mr. Urdeman.
You know, when I ran four years ago, I didn't know much about a lot of these topics and I've stepped into them. And what I've heard from the community at that time and now is there's better ways to deliver those services than directly from the county. We have phenomenal resources within Southern Valley Alliance, of which we're a contributor at the county level. I'm personally a contributor as well and believe in their services. We have services like Help House attached to a church location. We have services like West Creek that popped up 19 units for people that were previously homeless within the mental health space, high index and overlap. And what John said is absolutely true. We don't have enough beds, we don't have enough funding and we don't have enough staff or people in the pipeline. So, we have to address that issue. At a time when the state is taking on all kinds of other things, they've actually reduced the reimbursement rate for mental health specifically. And the reason they're doing that is because it's so costly. We know that it's growing and growing and growing and growing. But if anybody in this room sat out in front of any middle school right now and we sat down, we would be able to see the kid that's going to end up on the emergency pile if we don't do something about it today. So, the answer is to move upstream. If I had more time to answer the question, I'd give you a better answer. Just feel free to ping me. But we need to move upstream and address mental health sooner, not later. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, Ms. Anderson. So, mental health is often the tipping point between relationship breakdown, food insecurity, job loss, homelessness and sometimes crime. A third of our Carver County calls are mental health related. And this is a huge issue and there's things that we can do upstream to address this. As far as the specific question around women who are in abusive situations, it's not enough just to have one bed. Most women are not going to leave their homes unless they will take their children with them. So, we need to find a way to partner with Southern Valley Alliance and some of the other great organizations we have to find homes for, and places for these people, for these women to be and to be protected. Because so often, their assailant will come after them. So, this is an issue that I've talked with Sheriff Camerud about and this is something that we really need to address in Carver County.
All right. Our next question is, the Surgeon General released a report in August called Parents Under Pressure Regarding Parental Mental Health. Roughly half of parents call their level of stress completely overwhelming. What are ways that county funds can be used to improve the mental health of parents? And we will start with Ms. Anderson.
This is what I've been talking about. We actually need, if we can spend more money in preventative measures before people fall into full-blown crisis, not only do we help people earlier on, but we also have the added benefit of saving taxpayer money. Right now, our mental health, the people who are struggling the most with this are actually our seniors and our youth. Although I am a parent and suffered many, many years of my own mental health crisis during that time, I think partnering with our schools, partnering again with some of our nonprofits and other government agencies, we can really find solutions to go upstream and help parents. Because when a parent is healthy mentally and physically, children are healthy.
Okay, and now we'll have Mr. Bowe.
Very good, thank you. So, when I was serving on the legislature, I had the opportunity to serve on K-12 Education Committee. And during that time, I had several teachers and counselors who came and talked to us and spoke about the numbers of students they were seeing. A great increase in the number of students who were struggling from anxiety and depression and alienation and loneliness. And so, that was a problem. They said students were seeing increasing numbers of considering suicide. That's a frightening thought as a parent and a grandparent. But it was also not only children, but adults as well. I heard from one man in particular who was in tears and he said, my grandfather started the family business. My father grew the family business. I am deathly afraid that I'm going to be the one that loses the family business. That's a lot of stress on people as the economy continues to struggle. So, we need to be ready and I think our solution once again is partnering. When we can partner with others, we'll do more with less and that can be very helpful.
Mr. Mahalov.
Yeah, I think I wouldn't bring just to the parent stress level. I think that everybody's seeing a lot more stress nowadays and it's felt through, you know, what happened with COVID and kind of how our society is. I think we just pull out more stress. And one of the key points is that we have to make mental illness not a dirty word anymore. People with mental illness need help. It's not, they shouldn't feel bad about searching for the help. I think that the stress levels are getting higher and higher because people are not getting the help that they need because they think that makes them look like a bad person. So, we have to have the services there to support them and make sure they have access to the services and people know how to get to those services. There are a lot of services and partnerships that we already have, but people just don't know how to get there. And I think we need to make sure that we're getting out there and making the newsletter or doing something to make sure that people know. Mental stress is okay. It happens to everybody and it's okay to talk to somebody about it and here are the resources to do so.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Urdeman.
Generational mental health and mental illness is real. I think most of the people that are in this room, we're the first generation to actually deal with it. And this isn't a rip off the Band-Aid, it's a peel it back and there's not a one size fits all. But I will tell you that I think that Carver County is the gold standard when it comes to addressing some of this. We are the healthiest and happiest county in the state and we rank very, very high. But the area that we don't do well, when we see the surveys, is we don't do well with social connections. If you just have too authentic relationships, the incidence of mental health and illness goes down exponentially. And so, I'm proud of the team of mental, the public health group to launch Communities of Belonging to, it's not perfect, but to close those gaps and have more social connections. I'm proud of Sheriff Camerud leading the charge for what he calls checkup from the neck up, where every sheriff's deputy is required to see a counselor 30 minutes every year. And if everybody's doing an hour every year, everybody's doing, it takes the stigma away. I've been a champion for us to increase those resources because like Lisa said, the cost is exponentially higher if we do it later. Sorry.
All right, our next question is about budget and finances. overseeing the budget is a major responsibility of a commissioner. How would you balance county residents' needs for services with the tax burden on residents? And we'll start with Mr. Urdeman.
Four years ago, I anticipated knocking on doors and saying, having people say the taxes are too high. But what people told me was is whether they're higher or they're not, I just want to know I'm getting value. The conversations are way different. I'm knocking on 9,000 doors twice and I'm getting there. And people are saying it's, the taxes are too high right now. They're too high. You're going to have five years in a row of double-digit tax increases by the city of Chaska and you get an inflection point. They did a great job of articulating what their needs were, but it's simply unaffordable to do it all at one time with the public health. We took that feedback from staff, we took that feedback from residents and guess what? We have a 1965 building that when I came in, we had no plan to do anything with it. Now, we have a plan that's not going to cost anybody any else because we're responsible with when the bonds come out, we're responsible with our budgeting. That's just one example of planning in advance. We can't wait for everything to come because guess what? If we're going to tax 11%, our board's at 9% right now, which I did not agree to, we're going to double, we're on a pace to double the taxes of your home every seven to nine years. That's unsurmountable. And what we're going to do is we're going to choke off a successful referendum in 25 if we don't do something about working upstream. Thank you.
And next we'll have Mr. Mahalov.
Yeah, taxing is a huge, as I go and talk to people on the streets, taxing is one of the biggest issues that's out there. Between 2020 and 2024, we have a tax rate of 18.2%. Our operational budget, 2024 is $123 million. For example, Scott County with 44,000 more people has $138 million budget. I don't think we're being physically responsible. I think that a $118,000 capital expenditure in one year is ridiculous. We went from $134 million to $242 million in one year. It's criminal what we're doing to our citizens and we're wondering why people are scared of the taxes because they are going to double. It's a fact that people are not going to afford, we're trying to get affordable housing and we're taxing them out of their own houses. At what cost? Are we going to get, you know, affordable housing but kick out all of our old people? This is, it's criminal and it needs to be looked at. You know, it's 35 years of business, why I've done P&Ls with larger dollar signs than this, we've been able to figure out how to make it work for everybody and we're just not being responsible.
Ms. Anderson.
This is a real issue of mine and I spent a lot of time on the Eastern Carver County School Board. The school district is the only government entity that can arbitrarily raise taxes without voter approval. Therefore, we had to look at and cut the budget over $10 million in six years. So, this is something that I think I'd like to see the Carver County Board do the same kind of due diligence instead of moving to just raise taxes and look at opportunities to streamline and potentially cut expenses. I also think that we would do really well if they budgeted more than just one year at a time. If as a board member, you can look at a budget over a 10 or 20-year period and anticipate, you can create a tax stabilization plan. And that's an opportunity for taxpayers to understand when and what their taxes are going to when they do rise.
Mr. Bowe.
Very good. You know, as I went around and talked with residents in District One, the number one thing I heard was growth, but number two was taxes and the taxes are too high. As I talked to businesses, once again, that same complaint about regulatory burden and tax burden. It's real and we need to address it. I can tell you that working at other counties, they did, I think, a better job or were more flexible and found more ways to do things to keep their costs down. Once again, partnerships and collaboration will allow us to do more with less and that serves the county residents and serves them well. So, I'd like to continue to look that direction. Planning more for our future is important, but I saw a couple of different things at other counties where we needed to cut costs and we needed to do it quickly. And some cases, union contracts prevented that, but we were able to work with the unions and do things, some very creative things to cut our costs. And I think we can look at that here if we need to.
All right, well, we've got time for one final question. State and federal mandates often come without adequate or stable funding. How should the Carver County Board deal with these situations? And we'll start with Mr. Bowe.
You know, having served in the legislature, I can say, yep. That's absolutely right. Unfunded mandates are the pain in the neck for local government to get things done. And this is where the rubber meets the road here at the county and local level. So, what do we need to do? Well, we need to, number one, talk with our legislators, communicate much better, much more often with our legislators to let them know the pains it's causing us and work with the legislators. That's one advantage I think I bring to this seat is I have a working relationship with folks on both sides of the aisle, in the House and in the Senate at the Capitol. And when we need to go talk with them about issues that are important to us, projects that are big and they're too big of a lift for us, or something that we need help with financially, I know them and I can, I can talk with them because I have the working relationships already. But that's the biggest key. But then, once again, we come back to partnerships and collaboration. When we are facing a budget crunch because of mandates that are unfunded, we have to meet these mandates, but we can be creative.
Ms. Anderson.
I know all about unfunded mandates. I was on the school board for 14 years. It happens all the time. And I was on three school district advocacy. And the legislature doesn't care. What we really need to do is we take the, what the legislature does is giving us unfunded mandates and we have to make it work. And so again, we really probably need to take some time and really look at the strategic plan of Carver County and prioritize where the spending needs to go. So that's, that's one of the things that I would really recommend is, you know, maybe time to reallocate some budget allocations and look at where the spending is. I also would like to look at just a levy-only budget and see if there are areas that we can streamline as well.
All right. Mr. Urdeman.
This is one that bugs me too. And you can't even get your hands around it. When I asked the state to give us a report as to how many unfunded mandates are there and what does it mean for us, couldn't get a straight answer. And that won't surprise anybody in this room. So I reached out to my colleagues. I make a point to have at least one or two people on every metro county board that I can compare notes to. And we're creating coalitions. We're pushing back. When it comes to in January, we would push up our legislative priorities. And we invite our lawmakers to come here. Jim Nash comes every year and he says the same thing every year. The number one export in Carver County are taxes. We've got to do a better job of bringing that back. I think it's going to happen through partnership and relationships with our peers to come together and say, we've had enough. And then to Lisa's point, we just have to deal with it. We have to figure out where it can go. And guess what? We're in a pretty good position as Carver County because we have fewer problems, pound for pound, than some of our peers. And so we're probably in a better position than most, but not a favorable position. And honestly, it's because the county can do it best. They push these dollars to us because they know we can squeeze it out there. We can deliver it with our local government. They did the same thing when COVID dollars came here. They said, give it to the county, they'll spend it the best. And I think that's right.
Mr. Mahalov.
Yeah, it is an issue, obviously. And I don't want to fund mandates. So the best way to deal with them is to not let them happen at all to begin with. And is being a voice and talking to your local, state and federal representatives and making sure that they are actually representing the people that they claim to be. It's too easy to pass the buck and it's happening way too often. So we need to make sure we're getting collaboration with other counties, other people, and making sure we're communicating that on a daily basis to our legislators and to prevent it from even happening in the first place. And the last thing is we definitely should, we've got to fund that is looking 10, 20 years in advance and kind of anticipating what these things might happen. A lot of these mandates aren't just out of the blue. We know they're coming. We need to make sure we're planning for them.
All right. Now we'll have you give your closing statements to summarize your qualifications and positions. And we will start with Mr. Mahalov.
Yes, thank you very much. The commissioner we choose on November 5th will have just one vote on a board of five individuals for the entire county. The commissioner must possess the ability to negotiate with people with different agendas. The commissioner must be able to communicate with individuals, not just listening, but hearing as well. Both sides and come up with common sense solutions that benefit the county as a whole. This candidate must value integrity and offer transparency to every citizen of Carver County. This person must be able to identify strategic initiatives and manage productivity of 785 county employees. I have managed revenue larger than the county budget. I have been responsible for the success of thousands of employees at one time. I have served the community for nearly two decades, even at times risking my own life to do so. It's time for a diplomat that hears you. It's time for common sense. It's time for fiscal responsibility. It's time for empathy for those less fortunate than we are. It's time for integrity. It's time for leadership you can trust and respect, even if opinions are different. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Urdeman.
Well, I love Brene Brown. And she quotes Teddy Roosevelt about being in the arena. So many people in here are elected or have been elected or want to be elected. So thanks for being in the arena. I'm not the most polished guy, but I'm one of the most prepared and passionate people. I hope you saw that come through today. We talked about taxes. I'm the only guy in the last four years that's voted no for taxes. Not just no, but brought solutions. One of the solutions is it's the power of the board to create a special taxing district on 212 as we've got growth coming through there. We can shift some of the burden of the taxes from homeowners to businesses and we'll be better off because of that. A lot of comments, we're talking about the budget. When I came in, we had 7.1 employees per thousand population in our county. It was the highest of anybody in the metro. We're now at 6.5. That's one of many examples. And if you want to hear more, I put out a weekly thing on my Facebook page. It's called Chat With Matt. You can talk about every single topic that's out there. You can ping me for even more topics. And so I'd just like to say, this seat isn't mine. It's yours. You get to vote. And I would like to earn your vote on November 4th, 5th. And I'm the only candidate that was dumb enough to put out 100 things I said I'd do four years ago. If you check them, I'm the only one that's made progress on those things. I'd urge my peers to do the same thing, to say, what is it you're going to do? Not just, not just words, but what are the, what are the results you're going to deliver over rhetoric? I'd invite you to visit youmatterwithmatt.com/resultsmatter. Thank you.
And now, Ms. Anderson.
Thanks again to the League of Women Voters, the Southwest Metro Chamber of Commerce, and my fellow candidates for being here today. I want to take this time to thank my family and friends who put up with this election for really a long time. I want to thank my supporters who gave me almost an entire day after my narrow defeat in 2022 before asking me to run again. I'm grateful to so many who have donated so much time, energy, resources, and not to mention lawn space to support me and my message of change. I want to let you know, I will not let you down. I have spent two years examining Carver County, the board and its activities so that I be ready to serve the residents of District One. I am ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work. I am ready to collaborate with my fellow commissioners and community leaders. I am ready to challenge the status quo. I'm ready to advocate for government transparency. I'm ready to examine the budget to ensure taxpayer dollars are spent wisely. I'm ready to find opportunities to invest upstream. I'm ready to enhance mental health services. I'm ready to support our local businesses, not just in words, but in actions. I'm ready to govern in a respectful manner. And I'm ready to focus on results to ensure Carver County continues to be a great place to live, work, and play for generations. So I ask you, put me to work for you. Vote for Lisa Anderson on November 5th so that we can build tomorrow together. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Bowe.
Very good, thank you. So I would like to thank once again the League and the chamber for hosting this event. Ladies and gentlemen, we are facing an unknown future today. And that's a future likely filled with many challenges and many opportunities. I've mentioned it before, but I have some very unique experience that I think will be beneficial for us as we move into that unknown future together. That includes 30 years working in county government. So I know how county government works and how to get things done and how to fix it when it doesn't work. I worked in greater Minnesota at Blue Earth County where the biggest challenge was attracting and retaining growth. Then Scott County, which was the fastest-growing county in the northern half of the US for two straight years. Their challenge was how to manage growth, to make sure that it worked for them instead of against them. Finally, seven years as a manager with Carver County. So I know this organization from the inside out. I know who does what and how the pieces fit together and how we can make it work better. I've served in the legislature, which will be helpful for us as we need support from St. Paul with big issues, big projects and big needs. I have a history of partnering with others. And that includes cities, towns, townships, neighboring counties, the Shakopee, Midwakka, and Sioux community, the state of Minnesota, and others. I grew up in South Dakota, which is very business-friendly. That's why Minnesota businesses keep moving there. I want to bring that mindset to us. Ladies and gentlemen, I would welcome your vote this fall. I would be proud to represent you in our local government. I will work hard for you. I will work hard for both sides. And having been a county employee and a manager, I know how to work with both sides in the organization as well. Thank you.
All right. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate by League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County. And now for our closing, here is Southwest Metro Chamber President, Steve Curtis.
I want to thank everybody out here in the audience first. Thankful for you, the League, and excited for our partnership for many years to come. And thanks to candidates, good luck. And hopefully we'll see you all on November 6th, regardless what happens. So, League of Women Voters, Eastern Carver County, and the Southwest Metro Chamber would like to thank you all for coming tonight and our online audience for viewing. We'd especially like to thank our candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and for being willing to serve our community. Finally, we thank our facility hosts, great IT guy over there in the corner, and our members here volunteering tonight. Thank you very much.
The League studies issues that are important to our members